Yes, I did take two.
All right, seven o'clock, let's start, call this meeting the order. Regular meeting for the planning board on this Wednesday, April seventeenth. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so this is gonna be a joint meeting?
Excuse me, can I open, I want to open ours. Okay, the Dayton Conservation Commission is also having a small portion of this meeting, it's joint meeting, and I would like to open our meeting as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Just by way of reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. So confirming the next planning board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And off to the... March twentieth, yeah, that's wrong, hang on. When is the next meeting? I'm just, I'm reading the script. That's what helps when you read the teleprompter. All right, so let me look on the calendar here, the next meeting is actually... It's, is it May first? May first, right?
That makes sense.
Yeah, May first. First, first and third, right?
First and third.
First and third, so the next, this is the third, the seventeenth, the next first is May first. The next is actually May first, twenty twenty-four. Okay, so, good? All right, first order of business is to review, discuss, and act on a, on Justin and Stephanie Pratt, fourteen Maris Lane, map nine, lot fifty-seven-nine, for a water drainage problem. You actually go to the podium, I'm sorry, I don't know why the table's there. Yeah, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Conservation Commission also. Mr. and Mrs. Pratt are with me. I was contacted a couple of days ago, as the board and I think the conservation agent is aware, they live on Maris Lane.
Yes, sir.
I physically went there, I don't know if anyone on the board has been there.
Yep.
You've been there. And I did look at the filings with the conservation, and the particular lot that he's in is nine Maris. It was, no wetlands delineated on the filings on their particular lot. The nearest wetland was his neighbor right here, to his right, looking at his house, and there also was some wetlands to the left towards the intersection of the entrance to subdivision.
I'm looking at the plans now, yeah, you're well without, well outside of the hundred-foot buffer.
So when I went there the other day, because he had mentioned to me there's a substantial building of a pool of water in his backyard, I was mortified because I would say, this is his walkout basement, probably five and a half to six feet, the water was pooling, and it's, I don't know, it's between three and six feet deep, depending on how much rain we get.
And we've got...
And I recognize we've gotten a lot of rain.
Right.
This isn't the only town that I've been to with rain issues. But this, this was not a pre-existing condition. So the reason that we're here tonight is we're looking for direction, and I'm glad the conservation is here, the conservation agent's here. I don't know if they, I know tomorrow night you have a hearing also. But we're looking for direction on what to do, because I deem this as a health issue. They have a four-year-old and they have a one-month, a four-year-old, a one-month-old. And I'm concerned about that, I know the board of health has been contacted.
Okay.
And we don't want to get in trouble with anybody, but we really do need direction, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, yeah, thank you, we got the photographs here, and, yeah, that does look pretty bad. And I don't know if the Conservation Commission was even prepared to talk on it this evening, I know you're gonna talk on it tomorrow, but...
No, we, they are on our agenda for tomorrow, and the only thing on our agenda for tonight is to meet with Serpent or to hear Serpent.
Well, we do have correspondence and public input, so we actually could do another public input.
Mr. Aguirre, I know you're here specifically for the subject, do you want to speak on this? On what your recommendations might be?
So obviously, the situation out there is not good. But the only, you can probably look and stay, it can be one... The only thing I would direct you to, I'm not sure if it was in your packet tonight, did Mrs. Easton D. include the original approved design plans?
Yeah, we're looking at those now, yeah.
So you will see that this particular lot always had a depression within it, which, if you look at the topo lines, it was always going to collect water. So it's something that has been there since the initial design, it was approved. Obviously, we've had historic rain levels right now. No one probably anticipated that Mother Nature would not allow the water to percolate faster than it could accumulate, but that's happened. So, so yeah, I guess we're all looking for some guidance from the board, I don't think anyone did anything wrong here. I just think there was a depression on this property that was always intended to be there, and unfortunately, it's filling up. I will tell you for the record, I did get a call from the neighbor, who is not part of the subdivision, who is concerned about the pumping of water. I did tell that neighbor that you were doing what you need to do to create a safe situation, but we would address the long-term implications of where this water will end up.
If I may just address that specific point. He's correct, I think you've seen the pictures, there are three pumps there, they're not, they are discharging on our property, his property. But I'm not gonna deceive anyone, water flows, so, you know, there's no question the water is flowing. I seriously question whether the water's even percolating back towards the property. And I also, a quick point, I did look at the topo map, I believe the bottom of the, on the plan was like six feet below the foundation issue. I don't know, I was gonna maybe hire a guy, have him shoot it.
Yep.
Because to me, it looks like a lot deeper than six feet from that foundation. So I just, I might have a guy shoot that with a transit, was I right?
You see six and a half?
Yeah, roughly six and a half feet.
Thirty-seven point five, and then the lowest point there's thirty-one.
Right.
That I can see, but pre-existing was twenty-eight, so...
I see twenty-eight, yeah.
I don't know, but that's before loom and this and that.
Yeah, pre-existing was twenty-eight, I remember seeing that.
Yep.
So, but, I don't know that the grade could have been massaged when the, when the house was constructed, obviously sloping and whatnot, but this is not gonna get any better, no one could anticipate the type of rains that we've had. I can tell you as a soil evaluator, we're actually creating high water levels right now in the soils. So when we dig holes ten years from now, we're gonna see the water levels where they were today. So, so this isn't gonna go away, we need to address it. I'm just, it's, you know, it's one of those complex things, because we have a neighbor who's very concerned, we have a homeowner who has a concern, and water is abound.
Yeah, so I had the benefit of coming in to town to work when the commission had already approved this lot. However, I did see the landscape all cleared, and it was relatively level at that time. So, I mean, it was sloped down, but it wasn't depressed in that area. So what I think may have happened was when the house was brought, you know, it was brought up, and then, you know, obviously, I think it's probably where groundwater is, that's why you're not getting here today.
Yeah, correct.
The problem is, is it, it goes like, it comes up into my foundation from there,
and when I try to walk out there, it's easily up to my shoulders. So I've gone out there to see how deep it gets, and I can't even go all the way out there, because it's that deep.
I think the point you're making, though, the existing grade was X. Top of foundation brought in quite a bit of fill to get to X plus three, arbitrary number, agree? Yeah, it was evident to me also.
Let me say thirty-six, right?
Yeah, and then the other thing I just wanted to point out, within the past year, Mr. Pratt came to the Conservation Commission to remove, was it four lodge trees?
Yeah, there were, yeah.
Four ready-lodge trees?
Eight, but, four in that area.
Okay, but from what I know about trees and evapotranspiration and all that, Jim will tell you too, they...
During, during growing season, a large tree, there will be about two-hundred gallons of evapotranspiration per day from each tree. That's a very, you know, roundabout estimate, but that's what's in the books. So how much water does that take? I mean, if we're not into that season yet, we're approaching that season, we are approaching it.
They were dying trees.
Yeah, they were.
I got an ISO-certified guide.
But that's not the point, the point is they did absorb, you know, a huge amount of gallons of water that they no longer absorb from the ground. So now we're looking at that as partially to blame, right?
That, you know, we can't answer, we, we don't know, we can't answer that.
So I, I think the point is we'll take, and there's some issues, and we, we need direction.
Well, I have one other theory that may help a little bit. The, under Center Street, there's an eight-inch pipe that absorbs the water from that property. If that pipe is not cleaned, and the culvert going out to the river is not clean, that water is going to rise. So all of those things have to take in, taken, be taken into consideration. I happen to have been there quite a few times in the past. I don't know, you know, how, you know, it's been a lot of water, okay, I'm gonna just leave it at that. A lot of rain.
Yep.
But that particular spot there has to be looked at and checked to see if that pipe has got any debris in front of it, or whatever, that will create more problems.
So I think that's, I'm sorry.
Where's the, where's this lot sit in relation to entering up Maris Lane?
You take a left in the Maris Lane, and the water's on your left, and you start to veer a little bit left, he's the first house on the left.
First house on the left.
Yeah, right after the replication area.
Yes.
Wasn't, wasn't there drainage put in there?
I don't, I wasn't around when you guys approved it, I was just, yeah.
I believe, I believe a few years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but there was an issue with drainage, and I thought there was drainage installed down behind those houses and carried over.
There was something with drainage, but I don't recall exactly what it is.
Mr. Chairman, that was on the other side of the street.
Yeah, it's on the other side of the street. All right.
I thought it was wrong.
I'm looking at it now, there's parcelays, wetlands.
Now, you had mentioned a lot of rain, just for information, since March first, Dayton's had fifteen inches of rain. That's three months, no, more than three months, five months' supply of rain that we normally get.
It's still an issue, and if that pipe is not cleared...
Right.
And, and that brook going out to the back into the river is not cleared, these things are gonna happen more and more. Now, there's also a drainage under the road that ties into that eight-inch pipe that crosses Center Street. That also should be looked at as well.
Is that under the HOA?
I don't know.
Not on Center Street.
It's not yet, right?
We, we, we don't even have an HOA there.
Not yet, right?
I don't believe there is, no.
I haven't seen anything about it, no.
So I apologize, I don't know your name.
Joseph Figurito.
Mr. Figurito, this, this is, this is one of the reasons I wanted to bring in transit, because when I went down there and looked, and I've done a few sites in my lifetime, you know, I'm looking for, that water level did not seem like it was dissipating appropriately, and I questioned whether there was some type of blockage, which has been a very common problem in Norton, in Plainville, in North Attleboro, right now, because of the excessive rains. It wasn't exacerbated years gone by. I mean, we're all similar age, this is the most rain we've ever seen.
But where does it tie in from? Where does it, where does that tie in from, from lot nine to get to that pipe? Because I don't, I don't see anything here.
No, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about this water reservoirs at the corner of Center and Maris. That's what you're talking about.
It's, if you're standing in front of the subdivision, the entrance to the subdivision, on the right-hand side,
Yep.
there's a culvert there.
Yep.
And there's a pipe that runs across Center Street.
Yeah.
If that water gets within, I would say, two feet of the road, then that pipe is blocked. Okay? So I, I think that pipe is no more than two feet below the...
Well, I have a simple theory when things really go awry like this. Catastrophe is a combination of many, many things going wrong, we've got the recipe here. So I think, so we can start to check some boxes, with your permission, I'll reach out to the highway superintendent tomorrow.
Take a look at the drainage.
Check that culvert, at the drainage. I believe that the equalization drainage that you're referring to that goes under Maris Lane is still in the developer's hands, I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
What do you mean by developer's hands?
Meaning, we don't have control of that culvert.
I don't think the way's been accepted yet, has it?
No, it has not.
No.
I'm not really sure, but I think that pipe was there way before Maris Lane.
Okay, it's possible.
Ever, ever.
He's talking about the equalizer from one side to the other.
Oh, from one side to the other, yeah, okay, all right, that...
So, but either way, Mr. Ferry is not shy, he'll look at that one too and let me know.
Okay.
I think if we do that, that may, and we find problems, that may help alleviate some of the level.
It's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a fix-all.
I would, I would encourage you to protect your client, I think the transit's a good idea, because what we might find is if that depression is, is too low, where the water won't naturally run to these areas that are set up for drainage, maybe we have to do a little bit of filling to try and encourage it to go that way.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if I shed a few water levels, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
And grades.
Okay.
So I, I can have that at the next meeting, if that's something you'd like.
I'm sorry, what?
I can have that for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so that sounds like a plan, Mr. Aguirre, if you could please, I'll reach out to Mr. Ferry, and he can take a look at the drainage, see if we can start to peel, peel the onion back and see what's going on.
And if, which sounds like likely, there's gonna be, have to be some fill, how much, you know, I don't know, but what would that trigger in terms of who has to get involved, so that they can anticipate what's gonna be?
Well, it's outside of the resource area, that I understand.
Yes.
But it's within the protected area, would that require anything from you?
So, the protected area is a conservation restriction land, right?
Right, yeah, the, the greenish on the planet, yeah. Not, not wetland, but conservation restricted.
Right, so as long as you stay outside of that, so if, as long as you know where it is?
I don't think it's possible.
I honestly don't think that any of them...
I think, I think the center of the pond is right on the line.
Okay, well then, natural heritage needs to be involved sooner than later, just so you know, because it's on natural heritage habitat.
Right, and, and I'm not in any way trying to be difficult or disrespectful, but I think the, the fill wouldn't harm the land.
Right.
It's not like...
Right, but that's what I'm saying...
Any notice, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm with you.
But we're, you're actually in a good situation, because it hasn't been yet approved by the planning board.
Right. Accepted, the way hasn't been accepted, that's, that's nice enough.
It's not been accepted, no. Okay, well, sounds like we gotta, gotta plan that.
And I don't, I don't think you need to come to conservation tomorrow night, unless you want to, you can come to the next meeting unless you want to. I mean, I don't know that you're gonna hand anything different.
Yeah, everybody's here, you got a capital audience.
As, as you were saying, it's more of gathering information right now and then come up with a plan. And I greatly appreciate all your time and effort, and it's not exactly that close to me, so if we didn't come tomorrow, that'd be okay.
I have a question, yeah? So if it, you know, it's still, there's still water there, what if it comes up again? Where can I pump without causing an issue?
Into the storm, into the storm drains.
Yeah.
Pump into the storm drains?
I'm gonna check with Mr. Ferry tomorrow to make sure, but I think the storm drain is a more appropriate location.
Yeah, I think so too.
I just want to make sure I have permission to do that, because I...
Storm drain, storm drain is an accepted receptacle that treats the, the stormwater, and then it will end up going to the stormwater infrastructure, which is where it belongs.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure if someone doesn't complain that there's three hoses going towards the storm. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for checking.
Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And I'll be, I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Absolutely. Pleasure to meet you both.
Pleasure.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You want me to reach out to you, or me? I'll leave you on.
At least, we should always have joint meetings. Sorry, bad joke.
Four hours.
Yeah.
Should always have Jim too, I guess, huh?
I know, right, tag team, thanks, Jim. All right, so next item on the agenda is Michelle Tinger of Serpent with the Workshop for Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee to review the proposed conservation subdivision bylaw. So it looks like you've already joined?
Yes, thank you.
Because we have feedback, I'm here to do it.
Yeah, thank you. I do need to be allowed to share this.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can make you a co-host?
Yeah, that works, thank you.
Should be good, I think.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right, so, thank you again, planning board members, for having me tonight. For everyone on the Conservation Commission, my name is Michelle Tinger, I am the principal environmental planner for Serpent. Typically, I would be joined by Danica Belknap, who is the manager of environmental programs. However, due to scheduling, it'll be just me tonight. So I'll try to go through information, and if you can see on the screen here, that's where the information will be presented. So if you want to take a look at that, I know planning board members, you've heard the background information quite a, quite a few times, so I'll try to be considerate of your time as well, so that way we can get as much feedback from all of you as possible. So I'm sure we all know what an open space design bylaw is, so typically it provides some kind of flexible subdivision divide, reduces environmental footprint, undeveloped land is typically set aside for conservation, and there are different types of names for these types of bylaws. They can be open space, residential design, natural resources, protection zoning, et cetera. So that just goes to say that there are several different ways of really calling or, or naming this type of bylaw. About a year or two ago, Serpent did do a review of the entire region just to see where things were in terms of where all the different bylaws are in the region. So we did receive a, an EEA fiscal year twenty-three grant that allowed us to conduct a review, get community feedback, conduct interviews, eventually making bylaw updates for both Dayton and Middleborough, and having some kind of peer-to-peer learning exchange, where we're able to discuss with each of you and receive feedback as well. Some of the results of this bylaw analysis included seventy percent of communities allowing OSRDs in the zoning bylaws, three of which actually allowed them by right, sixteen requiring a special permit. Sixty-one percent of the region is zoned for an OSRD bylaw. Some more zoning analysis, this is just to show you some minimum open space requirements. A little deeper on the left, as you get darker in the orange color, it is a higher percentage of open space that's allowed. Over to the right, we do showcase the maximum allowed housing lot density, which again, going back to the darkest orange color, there is a higher density per acre. And I'll pause for a moment, just to allow you to absorb that information.
Can I just, just kind of this background, just, so, so, like, so Dayton already has such a, has a bylaw, it's had it for twenty years. No one has ever made use of it, no developer's ever made use of it, except one, which is Forest Hills, but they ran afoul of other issues not related to conservation bylaw, but it doesn't sound like, to date, in twenty years, anyone has ever found this as an attractive alternative, so... I mean, that's one of the things I'd just like to hear, what a, like, carrot and stick approach, that if you think this is a better way for any new houses to, housing developments to go, they already meet the guidelines, they can already build, they pass all the hurdles, just rather push them in one direction than another, you know, what are some of the ideas about ways to do that? I don't know if that counts, though.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It, it's, it's hard to say with updates to any bylaw if it will be used more. There are ways to improve how these bylaws really ultimately are used, and allowing for regulations or protocols to not be so, so stringent in how, or essentially achieving what they're ultimately trying to do with the permitting process, may help in streamlining that. So it's really looking for ways to improve these bylaws, how do we streamline the process? And we'll see in the future if it is something that is used a lot more. However, there, there never really is a guarantee as to whether or not a developer, someone will come, say, a year from now, or a year after you've updated these bylaws, and will ultimately go and use it. But it does help to always improve these bylaws, instead of providing or creating more barriers for them. So a few takeaways from, from the interviews that were conducted. Over fifty percent of communities were seeing the bylaws utilized, so going back to the point of sometimes these bylaws can be a little too restrictive. Is there a way to loosen up these regulations or allow for it to be a little more of a streamlined permitting process? That's where we're trying to gauge your thoughts on what feedback can we receive to ultimately improve this bylaw. Generally identified what best practices are on paper, which don't always necessarily correlate to success on the ground. So going back to the point, just because we're updating these bylaws, it doesn't necessarily equate that someone will use it. However, it always does, it typically does help to improve the process. A committed planning board also seems to be more effective at ensuring low-impact and environmentally conscious design. So you as members, not to put you on the spot, but you can always create some kind of condition, something that you would like to see for developers to also further include in your, in their applications in order to seek some kind of approval. Some challenges to implementing an OSRD include ensuring meaningful open space designation and low-impact design when permitting OSRDs. Ownership and maintenance of open space, the biggest question is, once we update this, who takes care of it? Where does the money come from? Larger parcels for subdivisions are rare across the region. Does there need to be a shift in this strategy? Educational disconnect between higher density and environmental protection. So going back on, how do we educate the community and also make them understand what the benefits of this may be in the future? More developer and engineer interview takeaways. Special permits isn't necessarily more difficult than by right. Going back to, just because you're making something by right, doesn't mean that you'll get hundreds of applications suddenly coming through the door. The ease of permitting depends more on the planning board's flexibility and the required level of detail for the yield plan. Savings on construction cost is a worthwhile incentive for OSRDs, and surrounding open space does not increase home sales value. So ultimately, what we'd like to do is assist...
So it doesn't? I, I wouldn't think there would be some increase in value for a fixed square footage if more open space was available.
It doesn't, it's so, I, I guess that should be better phrased, it does not increase, nor does it decrease it. We can certainly provide more background information on that to further show numbers, especially in the region as it really...
Yeah, I'm talking like dollars per square foot, so like, keeping all things constant, right? If you're looking at, you know, a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot home with, you know, the, the normal square footage of land and abutting other parcels of land, with no real open space anywhere around you versus something in a smaller parcel with a bunch of woods behind you, I would think that would, that would, that would be, and with some guarantee that that would not be further developed. In my mind, I would think, you know, that would probably have greater value. Maybe it's, you know...
Yeah, yeah, I, I...
Not, not on paper, maybe, I guess.
I would hate to speak on something without having something tangible to show you, so we can always go back as another next step to show, yep.
Mr. Chairman, considering a house just sold in one of our subdivisions on an eighteen-square-foot, eighteen-thousand-square-foot lot, eight-hundred-and-five-thousand, tells me that it's not really impacting home values.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, going back to the point of it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't impact it, perhaps that's a better way of phrasing that.
It's not a negative impact, but it's also not a positive impact. Okay, thank you.
So going back to Dayton's conservation bylaw updates, we are going to be working with Dayton and Middleborough in order to further develop these, or, or to update these bylaws. So some of the proposals for Dayton includes improving planning board oversight on the selection of conservation lands to ensure it's valuable and usable to residents for recreation, and then encouraging low-impact development used by developers for better stormwater management. So what we want to know is, what are your goals for updates? My, my goal here for this meeting is just to listen to you, take all the feedback back to Serpent so that we can put something together for you to review as a future next step.
I mean, you hit me nail on the head in that first bullet is, open space is great, but only if it's useful open space. If it's all wetlands, nobody can do anything with it, and it, it shouldn't count. Right now, it does count, right? Right now, it does count, right?
Mm-hmm. Right now, it does count, and that will be a part of the conversation, too. We do have a list of questions. I know the board members here have seen them, but we'd like to just gauge more of your feedback, well, really, everyone's, again. But that will be one of the discussion points.
Can I just ask a question, this is a bit of a side note, about future use and ownership and maintenance of the property? So then it's like, whoever owns it's gonna have to maintain it, and so there's a kind of a given tape about public access versus having the HOA, for example, be the owner and take. In other communities, have there been like a balancing act between this is HOA property, but there is right-of-way through parts of it, or the public, you know, town, in other words, has certain rights of way, and taking things like trails and that sort of thing? So, you know, the town doesn't take, they take on huge responsibility? Would they have some limited access through, you know, through certain parts of it that are maybe the, the best pieces of it for recreation or trails and that sort of thing?
So we don't, we don't have numbers right now, but going back to the other point, all of these questions, all of the feedback that you have, we'll compile a list to make sure that we are responding to this with something more tangible, to really show you what those numbers are, so you can make the best decision for the town.
Yeah, sorry.
Quick question, just kind of piggybacking on that. In all, I guess, part of your information collection or examples, it'd be nice to see if, and maybe this kind of defeats the purpose of open space a little bit, but say, I know if I'm living in a neighborhood where there's open, say there's a field, or a trail, or something to that effect, that people need to add or access the road to, or the neighborhood, is parking ever kind of a part of that? Like whether, even if it's like a crushed stone lot or something? Because I know if, say it's a, a open field, or a hiking trail, like we kind of mentioned, that was kind of brought up at the, the last time we went over this. I think the residents would frown upon, you know, a line of cars up and down the road on a, on a nice, you know, every time there's a nice day out. So it'd be nice, I don't even know if that's allowed with, you know, open space, let's put a parking lot there, but I think it's something to look at.
It would be up to the Conservation Commission if we held that land, you know.
Right, because I mean, I think the two go hand-in-hand. Like the open space is great for people to use, but how are they gonna get in and out? What impact does that have to the neighborhood?
Even our current open space allows for a certain amount of impervious area, so.
Right. Well, yeah, we, exactly, because last time I had brought up the athletic fields, and then kind of thinking about it, it's like, okay, that's a great idea, but if anyone's ever been to the Pop Warner Field on a Saturday, it's like, you're parking on Route forty-four almost, not really, but you know what I mean? It's, it's a nightmare. So, open space is great, but, you know, like Jeff said, is it usable? And then, are there air, are there scenarios or examples where there's parking? You know what I mean? Because otherwise, I just see it being another situation. Like I brought up an example of the soccer field in the middle of the neighborhood in Rehoboth, which was great. Now they're building houses on that field. I'm assuming that's probably one of the reasons.
We can look into other communities to see what has been approved, but I would go back and agree with that. It's typically at the discretion of the Conservation Commission or Planning Board in your exchange with the applicant, and ultimately, what you're trying to see in those conditions, and what you would like to see included in there. So if you would like active recreational space being used, that's something that you would typically see if there's some way to include accessibility there, as, as part of the application package itself. So, Dyton's conservation bylaw does have eight different sections. So that includes purpose, applicability, procedures, modification of lot requirements, number of dwelling units, open space requirements, buffer areas, and ultimately, a decision. A little bit about your specific OSRD bylaw is that it is through a special permitting process. The allowed districts are residential and business. The minimum required open space is twenty percent. And going back to the point of wetlands can be included in that open space at a maximum of twenty-five percent. Minimum parcel size is four acres. The minimum required lot size and frontage is seventy-five hundred square feet and fifty feet. And then included within the bylaw is an open space-centered design process. So SERPED calculations roughly, from maximum allowed density, it's about five-point-eight-one dwelling units per acre. So just to give you roughly an idea of housing-wise, what is allowed within, within that property. And acres zoned for OSRD is about ten-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-eight ballpark. And this is for all of, all of SERPED. Percentage of town owned for OSRD is about seventy-six-point-ten percent.
So, in the SERPED examples, seventy-six percent of the town, of the open space properties owned by the town?
Are zoned, are zoned for OSRD.
Or zoned for, he said are owned by the town, oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, this is SERP, this is region-wide.
Okay.
I was about to say, is this Dyton inventory?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify, this is a certain SERPED inventory.
Got it.
Excuse me for that. So, a few potential updates that SERPED has recommended, and this is where we're kind of pause and have that back-and-forth exchange. We'll start from the very top of, of the bylaw itself. So, for the purpose section, adding language that emphasizes priorities for open space, such as usable recreational land. And if at any point you want me to move on to the next slide, or we want to shift gears, I'll kind of let you be the, the guide to that, but I want to make sure that we have enough time, and that there's a good exchange of information going on.
So, when you say usable, can you specify passive versus recreation, versus active recreation?
So, that is part of the conversation. Would Dyton ultimately like to see more passive recreation, more active recreation? But I do think that is a good question on what would you like to see more of within the town?
You know, trust me, my son had an ATV, whatever, but there needs to be locations for that.
Absolutely.
Just being wherever, you know.
I also think that should be a board designated, and I think the planning board will probably, would probably be the most appropriate to actually permit that, because I don't mind anybody having open space in there, but I don't want it in my backyard, so. I'm just being honest, and I, I, you know, especially if there's ATVs involved in that, no way. I, I've seen a lot of that happening. Go ahead, please.
Now here, passive and active recreation land. And with these developments comes a disruption to the habitat of animals. In this plan, is there any consideration taken for that disruption to the habitat of deer, rabbits, mammals, and wild, you know, birds?
Yeah, so for, for this conversation, it's, it's a comparison between what a regular subdivision is and a conservation subdivision. So, and, and I can go back a little further, there is a visual over here on the screen. So, on the top, you can see what a regular, typical subdivision is. It takes up a lot more land, the development is really more spread out. So that does disrupt a lot more of the environment that you're asking about. In comparison to a conservation subdivision, where it, it won't be exactly to the T of what you're seeing right here, but just to give you an idea, that it's typically more consolidated. Not as much disruption is being made to the environment, and that's really the goal of the conservation subdivision, is to take that into consideration. Take the open space, the wetlands, the natural space that would be disrupted, how to really minimize that, and also go about the bylaw in a way that prioritizes the environment, and then looks at the development, not vice versa.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess if it was a situation where we had a concern about wildlife, or disrupting some natural, you know, original resident, I, I don't think the development would get approved to begin with. Right? I mean, I think we'd have a situation, maybe, I don't know.
Well, in Massachusetts, it has to be a protected species.
Yeah, if it's a protected species, no. Okay, yeah.
Otherwise, it's kind of biggie.
Right.
Yeah, I got you.
On some of this, they want to put in a subdivision, say so many units, and they don't think it's feasible, so then they go with a conservation subdivision. And then, instead of us putting up with just the figures, forty houses on a parcel of land, now they move it around, they call it conservation, now we gotta put up with seventy-five?
No.
It's the same, it's the same number of houses.
Same number of houses, yeah, as long as it, it.
Yeah.
I realize they're condensing it, you know, acreage-wise, but are we just trying to fit more in the same area? That's all.
So that's, I, I think that's another point on, there are towns that do do density bonuses, for example. So, that would be something for you to consider, is, is that something that you would like to see in the town?
Definitely, no.
So, just, just throwing like, like, just trying to take what you're saying as an example of what a conservation subdivision is, it takes that exact number, it just compresses it. However, unless you want to see something different.
I realize all of that, but I mean, you know what I mean? Just so there's not, well, we can't get this, so we'll go over and try this, you know what I'm saying?
To clarify, don't you have to present to the planning board a yield plan?
Yes, you do.
Saying, showing exactly how many houses you would get on a traditional subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then with that yield plan, the planning board makes a decision on whether or not they, how many houses they could get on a conservation subdivision. That's how it's meant here, the special, special plan.
Yes.
So if there's a hu, a hundred acres, and fifty acres of that is wetland, they can only build on fifty, because fifty acres are wetland, so what you would do is determine how many houses tr, on the traditional, um, traditional lots you could make out of the fifty acres? Then, then if you do a conservation subdivision, you can still only do
The same amount.
Fifty, same amount of houses, but you would also have additional land set aside for recreation, okay?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, wait, is that in our bylaw now, or is that what you have?
That's in the bylaw now, but the problem right now is, there is a sizable percentage that can count as open space and be wetland, and I'd like to make that number zero.
Okay, because he, on, on the paper here, it said twenty-five percent of the, of that
Open space.
acreage could be wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, you can't use it, so why, why use, call it open space for the people?
Right, which, which means it's not useful, which means it's not useful recreation land, which is why I don't want it to count.
It's just for purposes, just to clarify, it does have good uses, but it's not what that is.
It, it's not, it has no recreational use.
Those animals we were talking about?
Yeah, right, but the, the whole, the whole, yeah, the whole point is, yes, I, I understand. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, using, using that as your open space to, to buffer what you're trying to do. And I want to get away from doing that. We obviously don't want to affect the wetlands, but we also don't want it to count as the open space, because you can, you can do neither active nor passive recreation in the wetlands.
Yeah. So actually, you got less, less open space for the people by, by calling wetlands open space?
Correct. Yeah, and I want to reduce that number, too.
Okay, how will you go about it? Would that be, um, town meeting?
Bylaw change.
She, she's here today to discuss what we, how we want to change the bylaws.
Okay.
So that would be part of the conversation, is, do you want to move forward with including, or, or continue to include wetlands within that percentage? Remove it, decrease it, that's where I'm kind of here to gauge what your feedback is, and
Okay.
make sure I'm taking that back with me.
And since we're on the topic, so the town right now says twenty percent can be
Minimum.
No, I'm twenty percent set aside, and then some portion can be wetland.
Mm-hmm.
And we're already saying, we don't really like the idea of some portion being wetland. But that twenty percent that the town currently says is a low-ball number when compared to most of the other towns in Massachusetts, right? Most of the other towns in Massachusetts are hovering somewhere around thirty, forty. And we're at the very low end of everybody else.
But other thirty or forty, including wetlands?
Well, that's the thing, if you chop off wetlands entirely, are you essentially bumping it up to thirty or forty?
We do, we do have that raw data, so we can absolutely share that with you, but that way you can see how other towns compare to, how much they, what percentage they include that is wetlands? Is it a lot, is it a little, is it nothing? But that way you get an idea of what's, what's in the region.
Okay.
And one of the other things we do ignore as a commissioner is, you guys probably seen it, you get the copy of the applications, I know Kerry's seen it. If it's a larger lot, and they want to do something, ninety percent of the town, um, just file an AMRAID. That way there, you know where the wetlands are, you know what they are, what their buffers are, what our jurisdiction is. We, when they file it, we review it, and now we have Wesley and Samson review it, which is working so far. And then, you know, they've got it for three years, they can extend it, and they know they can design what they're designing. Because it takes months to design something, right? Now they kind of have something on paper, and they're not guessing. Something that, you know, if the zoning and planning board offer us something for response, most of the time, if it's something large, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna recommend you file an AMRAID.
Okay.
You know?
The thing that bothers me with these small lots is, there's a setback to, to wetlands, there's a setback for everything.
Yeah.
Most people are building houses of two, three, four thousand square feet these days. And when you have, say we designate a hundred-by-a-hundred area, but there is wetlands on the outer edge of that a hundred, it, it, it's gonna be very hard to, to put a house in, in that small amount of space. So all of that would have to be taken into consideration if we do do any, any of this going forward.
Right, but thi, this is existing. This has been on the books for twenty years. So we're just talking about, we're really revitalizing it and updating it to what we want. I mean, I, I don't think anybody should be building a four-thousand-square-foot house on a conservation subdivision plot, just.
You'd be surprised.
I guess you can make it taller, Fred?
You really think that people want to go smaller, not bigger these days?
Okay.
You don't see, you don't see smaller being built, if you drive around.
Forty-three-ten? All right, forty-three-twenty.
Yeah, so forty-three-twenty. So, uh.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, hey, Woody, go ahead.
Yeah, just like you did, is that all right for saying something now?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on something that you were talking about earlier in the meeting. And I would like to thank her for coming to town, Dyton, thank you very much, thanks. But when you were talking about maybe softening or reducing some of our bylaws, you know, to make it a little easier for developers, I, I am forward against that.
I don't, I don't, Woody, I don't know, I don't know when that conversation happened. What are you, what are you talking about?
In tangential, yes. Yes, she, she brought it up, about softening some of our bylaws.
So, so I think the, I could, I could have rephrased that perhaps a little bit, but it's more of streamlining the process, not necessarily making anything easier for developers, but really, our job here at SERPED is to have a conversation with the town and see what you would like to do with this bylaw. So really, straight, uh, streamlining the process would make any, anything typically a lot better in terms of permitting and such, but we're really here to see what, what differences you would like regarding this bylaw. But not, not.
It certainly would not want to reduce any of our subdivision bylaws or delays that we have in place already, a lot of the, the kind of heat, in my opinion. And, and most developers coming before us all ask for waivers. So, we do soften it up a little for, for some, if the waivers are reasonable. But, you know, but most developers coming in, in subdivisions, and conservation subdivisions, they all want waivers for sidewalks. They're not concerned about safety, they're concerned about money, and a. Um, they're not concerned about safety, they're concerned about money on paving both sides of the streets. And then they put up these, um, tin caught berms. And, and, and in my opinion, a tin caught berm is, is not worth much after a few years, they fall apart, and the bylaws just tear them off. You know, if, if we increased our bylaws and put a granite curbing in all new subdivisions, we could definitely curb development because that's what the voters in the town of Dayton want. We want less homes, not more homes. That's what the voters want, that's what the people living here want. So is there any way that can help us to protect the town from more development? I think that's what our people are looking for. And that's all I'm gonna say this evening, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're talking about the con- conservation subdivision bylaws, so let's stay on point, forty-three, twenty?
Um, forty-three, uh, twenty applicability, so expanding zoning to which conservation subdivision applies. So adding a business district or allowing for any type of residential development. Uh, the second point is removing or decreasing the five lot minimum, so equivalent to about a four acre parcel. Is this something that is realistic, is a realistic minimum? Are there eligible parcels of that size? And what size are typical proposals here in Dayton? So.
Well, since we've never really seen one. Not really.
Twenty years, we've never seen one.
Um, we, we have them.
I didn't wanna correct you earlier, Dan, we have a few conservation subdivisions.
We do, okay.
Yeah, Lily Elaine as well, right off of Main Street, Hunter's Hill, keeping it as a conservation subdivision.
Oh, right, right, okay.
So, there, there are quite a few.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I will comment a little on the second sentence here. Uh, developers have said to me that if it's less than five lots, it's very difficult to make the numbers work. That's usually why five lots is the minimum. There are a couple of developments who came in less than five lots, but they were developers who had the equipment to put the roadways in, et cetera, et cetera. So they put some sweat equity into the subdivision. Uh, Tony's Way is one of them, there are only three houses there. But that was only done because of who the developer was who put it in. So, um, I, I would, I would entertain the discussion, but from my experience with developers, anything less than five lots doesn't make sense.
Yes, is there? Yeah, and I, I was gonna say right away, I don't see why we'd ever want anything smaller than that, but you got the supporting information that says exactly the same thing.
And Lily Elaine, I, I believe, uh, if I did a house count, was right around that street spot of five or six lots.
Yes, sir.
Keeping in mind what a member of the planning board just said in regards to growth and development, do we really want to go that way? Do we want to encourage growth and development? Or not encourage growth and development? I think we said that quite well tonight.
I honestly don't think that we have a choice. If people submit a plan on any parcel of land, and if they can show us a conventional subdivision plan, and then all of a sudden they decide where we would like to turn this into. We, I don't think we have a choice to, to say yea or nay. It's, it's their land. It's their land and it's their.
We can, we can definitely say no to the conservation if the conventional is, is more beneficial to the town.
Well, absolutely, we can say yes or no, but.
In that sense, but as far as the development goes.
Yes, no.
The same number of houses.
It's the same number of houses, it's not like the, they're, they're coming in to put, as, um, Mr. Crawford, uh, said, that the same amount of houses are going in, whether it's conservation or conventional. So I don't think it's, um, it's gonna change, nothing is gonna change. Nobody is asking to do more.
I believe the, the question is, do we decrease on the bylaw, by law?
Minimum.
To a certain, you know?
Yeah, it sounded like that's not, nobody would want that, including developers, it sounds like, so.
No, it, I was just giving you the perspective from a developer's perspective, that's all, which I think is important here, because everyone's still gonna propose a subdivision, so.
I mean, if, if we remove the minimum, nobody's gonna do it anyway.
It doesn't appear that way. The, the three lot subdivision is an anomaly, it's a really specified developer who will do that. Um, or it's a family who wants to own the entire street and money's out of the object, that's the other way.
I've seen that happen.
So if, if, uh, you know, if we, if, I don't know what anybody else here thinks, obviously this is a joint meeting, so if, if we, if we wanna consider removing that, it, it sounds like it, it wouldn't matter anyway.
I, I think this belongs under applicability, I'm gonna see the next couple of topics, so. I have seen some towns use this kind of as, you know, the carrot and stick approach, this is the stick approach, which is dead-end streets are only allowed in conservation subdivisions. There's a lot of properties that are long rectangles, street frontage, they loop back. Um, and if you said you can only do that as a dead end, even with, you know, the proper turnaround at the end, if you're a conservation, I mean, that's definitely a step for a lot of properties. I have no idea what that would mean when you say like, first do the conventional, um, plan? And you've got this over here saying, well, you can't do it if you're a, if you're gonna, your, your plan is a, is a dead-end street, but, um, but in theory at least, no, that, I think that pushes, that could push some people on.
Push, push somebody to a cons- conservation? Yeah.
I don't know if you had any other thoughts on that.
I, I think just so everyone understands, even if it's a conservation subdivision onto a cul-de-sac, all that means that the conservation subdivision will, we right now are requesting a hundred and fifty feet of frontage per lot on a conventional subdivision, when there is water in sewer. If there's no water, no sewer, it's two hundred and fifty feet. So that if they were to put ten lots on either side, you're looking at twenty-five hundred feet of a road, okay? If they do it on a conventional subdivision and it's, uh, ten lots, you're looking at seven hundred and fifty feet. Because that gets reduced to, actually, it could be even less than five hundred feet. But fifty feet of frontage is all you would need, so the developer would be putting much less of a road into that. The road wouldn't have the depth that it would normally. So there would be all the backland would be available. There's, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that.
So for, uh, for zoning, um, is, uh, would you be open to other, uh, other zone, allowing this in other zoning areas? So examples include the business district, um, or allowing any type of residential development?
What do you mean by other residential development?
Uh, so any, I believe, I would have to go back to see what was allowed. So I believe it's one, maybe one or two residential zoning districts in Dayton that actually allows this on there. Um, others do not, I would have to go back to the, your zoning bylaw.
I didn't realize it was, it was restricted residential.
No, I don't think.
If, if it isn't, I don't think it should be.
Well, I guess it depends what you mean by other residential development. Right now, we only allow single-family homes, are you referring to multifamily?
Just mul- yeah.
Okay, multifamily.
So that's, that's a, a special permit?
Uh, for two-family.
Right.
Right, but if you're talking multiple families, like more than that, then that wouldn't be allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already not allowed.
So what that would do if the, if the board was inclined to allow multi-families, they would only be allowed in conservation subdivision, and that would owe, um, that would offer up like townhouse style, you would end up with maybe a triplex. So I think that's what the question, where the question was going. Other residential development?
So, let me go back, cause we do have, I, I believe further along in the section, there is something on multi-family and then density bonuses and such. But I think this is, yeah, it, it's okay, there's a lot covered, uh, to cover in this, but this is more along the terms of, would you like this to be in allowed use in all zoning districts? Keep it as the zoning districts that you only allow it in? Um, that's more of the
I don't see
The topic here.
The business thing.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, no.
We need business and I, I wouldn't take away from it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we have industrial districts, we have some other districts.
It's gonna be kind of a mix of, yeah, weird, okay.
Yeah, that was, um, more of an example, just to show you, there's, there's other zoning districts that you have there. Would you like to see that included on there? If not, that's more, that's part of the conversation.
Okay.
So for procedures, how has this review process been for projects? Could there any, be anything done to streamline it, to simplify the process? We wanna hear from you typically, how, how is this from a, um, town and developer perspa- perspective? Is there a new unified review process that combines the special permit applications alongside other permit needs and involves a joint review process? Is there anything that can be done to review this process? So is there a multi-departmental meeting perhaps in the town where you have the town planner, the conservation agent, the building commissioner and such, sit in one room and review this process and go through all the permitting procedures before they go to each of the different boards? That's something that could potentially streamline the process if it's not something that is all done.
We're in the process of trying to figure out how to streamline the process right now. Um, so it's kind of, uh, something we haven't quite gotten to the bottom of yet. Um, could it be streamlined, absolutely?
Yeah, it's definitely something we're going to, um, make a priority.
We don't, we don't typically have multi-departmental joint meetings to review applications. We never ha- we never do that.
So another point is clarifying the development plan, um, submittal requirements. Should this be a conventional subdivision design, conservation subdivision, or both?
Right now, we request when they are considering a conservation subdivision, that they provide a conventional, a yield plan. So that the, the board can make a decision on whether or not it's advantageous to go to conservation. That's, that's part of, that's the current process right now.
Isn't that what most towns, those cities and towns do, or?
Typically, I thi- I think, um, off the top of my head, a little further along, one of our recommendations was maybe clarifying that yield plan. I think right now Dayton's maybe a little, maybe a little confusing, and not so easy to put together that yield plan.
The town of Dayton is a little confusing, is what you're saying?
Yeah, for the, for the, for the yield plan, for the year, yield plan itself.
It's not, it's not called a yield plan.
It's not, it's not yield plan, but it's, it's how to quantify
Yeah.
Those numbers and then ultimately show you
Yeah.
What that would be, so if there's a way to, like, actually show how to get to that math in a way that's simpler? If that would be like a nice, easy word to, to use.
I do think that's good criticism, I have heard developers complain about how much information needs to be on the plan that's submitted. Um, and quite simply put, if, uh, if you're trying to tell us what you can put as a matter of right, you need to include all of that data. Which means the, the ANRAD needs to be done, are you proposing billable lots? Is your roadway going to be able to achieve the permitting to get, uh, through this land or property? Is there wetland applications that are required? So, yeah, I, I, I can see where a developer would like us to further clarify that, but I wanna, uh, warn everyone not to get too lenient because the whole idea is what can you do as a matter of right? So there needs to be content on the plan.
So to the next point, have developers been following the four-step design process? Is this something that has worked well? I know you've mentioned there haven't been maybe two too many, or two, two subdivisions have, or, uh, conservation subdivisions have been listed. So is this something that has been working well, um, something that could be improved, perhaps clarified more on?
I think the question was, if you decide to go with a conservation subdivision, I mean, I have not three or four examples, I started the night with zero, but three or four. The fear is that, here's where we're gonna build, I can't do much with this space over here, that's my open space. Whereas we'd like to say like, show us what's the prime territory that would be good for open space, and then how would you build around it? So it's kind of, it's kind of reversing it, it's not, don't give us what you can't use and call it open space, you know? Let us help you figure out what's the useful piece that would be good for open space. Is that the way the conversation transpires, or is it not the way it transpires, so?
Well, but it, it still comes down to if you can put a conventional subdivision on that piece of land, however many lots you do there, then it would go onto a, a conservation.
Right, it's just like, draw the line of the open space, where's the block of open space gonna be? And don't just say, here's, here's what's best for me as a developer and everything else is, you can't do much with, that's your open space. Let the town be part of the decision about like, no, this is the open space, this is the good area for this and whatever else you wanna use it for, so.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do with this, is ANRADs, the notice of resource area delineation. So we know where all the resources are, and the commission has already agreed with the developer on that. So that when they come back to you, my, our hope is that they kind of go through that process with us first before they go through your process, so that you guys actually know what you're looking at, instead of just a hypothetical line that they say, this is what we're calling wetlands, when maybe they haven't considered that we have ORWs in town, that we regulate isolated rural pools, that, you know, certain things that we know we're looking for, but, um. So we're not talking about this stuff.
So I, I think the answer is, they have been following the four-step design process. Has it worked well? And, and obviously it, it, uh,
It's improving.
It's improving, and we're trying to work on our inter-departmental communication to help streamline the process. But I, I think as far as the developers go, um, it, it, it has worked, suggestively.
So for the last portion here, adding language to designating the open space step as to what types of open space specifically? Should it be preserved, um, and adding language to specify the open space so that it's accessible and usable to residents? So going back to the point of, are there ways to ensure that these open spaces are not just designated, but you wanna, you want people to use it?
Yes.
That's, that's the whole, the whole purpose there.
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
So a little bit more on procedures, um, adding language to design process specifying the incorporation of low-impact development when laying out the lots and roads, allowing modifications to subdivision design standards, standards as authorized by the planning board. So allowing narrow road widths would be an example of that. Adding language to require a statement of the designated open space land's current condition and suitability for public recreation with the development plan. And then lastly, specifying application submission materials and requirements. So does it differ, or showing how it differs from the, uh, conventional subdivision? Are the conventional requirements adequate, at least referencing where to find submission requirements to? That was one thing that we did find, was there were references to, um, very specific things, however, it, there was no mention of where to find that information if, if someone wanted a little bit more. So that would be more of just cleaning up some of the language and just making sure that we include C-page, whatever
Yeah.
Topic A on there.
Yeah, should definitely reference the regular subdivision rules and regs section. Yeah, unfortunately I didn't bring the books with me tonight, but, and that, if that, if that reference is missing, that needs to be in there.
That's actually a very good point to add on, in case we wanna make it into C-page, that's, I like that.
Less to say page because it, it changes, or to see, go to section, whatever. So that they know exactly where they have to go back to.
That's why you get paid to dig.
So the add, adding, so I'm go- I'm working my way backwards here, adding language to require a statement of the designated open space land, land's current condition. Yeah, we definitely wanna make sure it's, like we mentioned, usable, usable open space. And, you know, to your point earlier about not just setting something aside they can't build on, but open space they can use for something else, for a, active or passive recreation. And maybe even access or parking areas, some, something like that. Is, is important.
The other thing, um, kinda wanted to point out, current practices in Dyton for conservation land is to allow hunting. So that kinda needs to get sorted out, I would think.
Would that be part of this?
Well, I think the rules will, if it's open space, that means it's open to the public. And nobody can hunt within five hundred feet of any home. So that's the law. So therefore, if they do hunt, they could get in trouble.
Well, yeah, I mean, currently we allow it on conservation land, is what I've been told.
I, I don't know how we could even say no to that because it is open space, right?
Right, but to me.
But it's private property as well, isn't it? Would it be private property?
No, open space is conservation town property, but what I'm saying like around.
Not necessarily. Open space could be owned by the HOA, it could be owned by a third party.
But I'm talking about, you know.
Yeah, right, okay.
So if we acquired it for, you know, recreation, we have to be kind of careful because I, you know.
That, I think that's something that needs to be researched as to how the law works for something like that. Well, maybe what other cities and towns are doing.
I don't think you could keep, keep the people off their own land. It's owned by the town of Dyton, the conservation commission, the people own it.
Yeah.
You can't keep them off their own land.
But what I'm saying is we need to try and make it safer.
Probably, probably motor vehicles.
Bikes, bikers.
You know, restrictions for, uh, I don't think the state would actually let you, you know, restricted four-wheelers and.
Even, I think bicycles, even those fat, fat tire bicycles.
Yeah, I mean, there's just things you can do, like, um, put like a box with like fluorescent vests during hunted season. People then wanna hike out there so they know that they're in the same area as hunters.
Well, we have it down near Broad Cove and it says, uh, be cautious during hunting season where orange.
Hunters are responsible for their own, uh, measures. Hunters have to follow state rules. They can hunt on any town of Dyton, town of Dyton, conservation land. And on state land, they have different regulations. A hunter knows you can't hunt within five hundred feet of a dwelling, no matter where I'm going. But the town can't stop anyone from using conservation land for hunting.
Can I make a suggestion, just in terms of time constraints? Cause we've been asking you questions back and forth, um, and you've been here before too, so. I'm looking at like third forty-three sixty-four ownership. I think if we jump ahead to that, that, um, and record the restrictions and then questions, I think that would be a good wrap-up for this, you think?
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think, yeah, we already, and, if you want me to jump, cause I don't have the list right in front of me, it's more of the presentation. No, if you tell me the number, I can jump to it. Yeah, so I have it right here up on the screen, so.
And we touched upon it a little bit, but.
We did, so if there's any more conversation that you'd like to have, so has ownership been something that is an issue? Who usually takes on and maintains ownership? How is that also being enforced? So is there an opportunity to add language specifying maintenance requirement and schedule here? So I'll open that up since we kind of already started touching on, on ownership a little bit.
I think we talked about in the past, like, town versus city HOA. And then there's also the possibility of like a third party, like the nature conservancy or something if they ever wanted to take it on. But we'd ever really talked about conservation, like, because they're the only ones that have, you know, money to buy things or, I'm not sure if they would. If, or the, you know, the, but they own a, a, a larger portion of the town as an organization than say, you know, um, as a body. But I don't know what you thought about, like, let's say somebody came, they have open space, they're like, well, like, the HOA can own it. It could be just general town property or it could be conservation-owned. What your preferences would be when given the option of things like that?
Well, I, I, I guess I'll speak for myself and they can speak for themselves, but, um, to me, you know, conservation lands ob- obviously hold value for the town, townspeople, like Jeff was saying, I mean, I, I would think that it would, but, because it's maintained in perpetuity if it's dated to the conservation commission. If it's just, just dated to the town, someday we could have a sewer treatment plant there, you know, we could have a school there, we could have a police station, whatever. So I think it's always a good idea to date it to conservation, but that's just my personal opinion, obviously the town.
Well, it'd be dated to the town with conservation, uh, ru- uh, running it, our, our restriction.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Well, my, my other issue is we talked about having recreation, open space. That, many things can happen here. The, uh, property owners in the area would have the right to use that only if that was owned by the HOA. If we donated to conservation, if the developer donates it to conservation or conservation buys it, then that means the public owned that. So now, I can go there with my grandkids and leave whatever garbage I want there. And it, it's, it, it's a big issue. So I would say that the best option is to have the HOA continue to own that. Because if, if, go ahead Jim.
You can also implement a deed restriction on the property, which does the same thing that Mrs. Caledonia was saying. And even though the HOA retains ownership, there's a deed restriction that it can only be used for open space recreation.
I like that, yeah.
By the owners?
Absolutely, you can make it part of your special permit.
And the deed restriction would be held by either conservation or like the wildlands trust or something, right?
That's the best of both worlds.
Or even two, two deed restrictions, one the wetland portion, two strictly to, to conservation. And then the, uh, other portion, which is gonna be the open space portion, held by the HOA. And that way, uh, uh, that narrows it down so that, you know, it's, uh, uh, it's limited to their use.
Can there be restrictions there on maintenance?
Well, they would have to maintain it.
Well, yeah, but we wanna clarify what maintenance actually is because maintenance to me and you is different, you know?
I would rather just see, uh, HOA taking.
I wonder what you're trying to imply there.
I'm not saying it right now.
Whoa. That's a loaded one.
No, but HO, but HOA being in charge of it, that, that allevi- because you can't put everything on, on the town.
Right.
And I'm not gonna run there and clean up.
And to enforce it as well, I mean, think about enforcing it, enforcing it's a.
Yeah, I, I like, that's a good balance right there because my, my concern was always the town taking more on. Uh, and if we put it on, if we, if it's on the HOA, then, yeah, it's on them.
They gotta clean up the trash, they have to mow the lawn, they have to do all that.
So pay the taxes, right?
But then, but then the deed restrictions come into play to protect it.
But they're also gonna have the allowance to restrict who can use the property.
Exactly, yeah, yep.
That's huge because if the public could go in there, they can't do anything. That's.
So then it's really not.
So it'd be their property with, with deed restrictions, um.
Yeah, and I was gonna bring that up earlier when you were talking about the trailhead. It depends on what the end use was. If it's for a subdivision, the people who own houses in the subdivision, well, then that's going to not need it, cause they can walk it, you know? But if it were going to be town of Dyton property with a open space restriction, then we might wanna consider a trailhead so that we didn't interfere with the neighbors, um, calling it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding it like everyone else, but I think if the HOA is in charge of the open space and controls who can and cannot go on there, then it really defeats the purpose of the town regulation of the open space because then it's not for the town, it's for the neighborhood. So it's great that they maintain it, but it doesn't benefit anybody outside of that neighborhood.
But it benefits them and that's the point.
The other thing is that, how does it work for taxes for, to the town on that property?
They pay taxes based on it being recre- uh, conserv- um, undeveloped land, it's taxed different, right?
Right, that's why most developers want to donate it to the town.
Right.
That's how we got fifty acres.
And on, on, uh, gifting land to the town, the other consideration would be, is there a way to include on these, um, on these decisions or something that's made, is how do you ensure that the property is clean that is being gifted? So if the town does get something that opens, opens them to a liability, say some kind of issue, some kind of hazard, is there a way to have something on paper so it doesn't leave a potential window of opportunity there for the town? So going back to ownership and gifting of land, you wanna ensure that when you're being gifted something, it's something that is of high quality that anyone in town can use in a safe manner. So going back to ensuring how open spaces can be safe. That would be another potential option for the town to consider.
I mean, depending if we don't wanna make it.
Everything comes up as, as, as you're speaking, I go, wait a minute.
We don't wanna discuss.
What, what's the liability to the town by accepting that land?
Right.
What's the, you know, there, there's so many things that come to play in this.
That's why it's nice to keep it on the HOA.
Well.
That way it doesn't ever come to that.
I mean, it, it's, it's a serious, it's a serious thing to think about, you know?
There is a third option though, which is groups like the nature conservancy, and they do actually own some town in Dyton, it's a very small parcel, it's like three and a half acres, but, in certain circumstances, they may be willing to take things as a gift and maintain it. And the town doesn't have to pay for it and it's more open to the public and, but I mean, that would be a special circumstance and that's their decision as much as anybody else's.
I worked for the wildlands trust actually.
Wildlands trust, I said.
And they always do the res- the deeper research to make sure that whatever they're accepting, if they walk it, they make sure they do the research so they're not accepting something that, you know, has this waste dumped out there, whatever, you know?
We don't have any of that in this town, do we?
No.
I tell you, you, you can't walk a property to, to find out what's underneath there, on the ground.
Yeah, true.
Is there another section you would like to skip to?
I didn't have any other questions. So forty-three sixty is the open space requirements, that's the twenty percent. Minimum with the twenty-five percent allowed, twenty-five percent of that allowed to be open space. Yeah, there, there is the numbers, right? So it's gotta be minimum open space of twenty percent and of that twenty percent, maximum of that, twen- a quarter of that can be wetland. And so twenty percent, as I understood it, you mentioned earlier, is a low number compared to other communities where you said it's the numbers thirty or forty percent even. Uh, but what we don't know is if we make the wetland allowance zero percent, what, is that equivalent to bumping that top number up to thirty or forty, I don't really know. Um, it's, you, you said you're gonna maybe look.
That would depend upon the lot size because that, that would vary.
Right, yeah, but.
You know, the percentage would vary.
Are we, sorry?
Are the towns that go to zero for wetland, uh, allowance?
Yeah, yeah, there are a few that do, um.
What are they, do you know?
I don't have them off the top of my head, but we do, um.
I, I have that at home, at least I can check, consider it.
Yeah, I think we, a while back, we may have shared all the information, like all the research that we did, but if we didn't, always happy to go back. But that has the information on all, the, the breaks of all the towns. But that way you can see like who allows what, what the numbers are, all that, all that good stuff. So adding language to specify that open space should be contiguous, I know that's been, uh, word thrown out there on what is contiguous. Is that something that could potentially be defined or is it something that's already defined?
Adjoining parcels and if things are under HOAs, then it won't matter anyway. Forty-three sixty-two is your, your, your paving, paved areas. Ten, ten percent open space to be paved, built. So we mentioned this before with parking, but if it's, if it's gonna be isolated, then it might not have a function anymore.
Are you saying built like stormwater infrastructure?
Um, so this would be.
No, I, I think what this is referring to is of that space, only ten percent of it can be, um, changed or altered. Which, for a trailhead or something like that.
That's kind of a high percentage, no?
Yeah, I, I leave that, that to you.
One acre or ten acres, I mean, that's kind of a lot.
What have you found from your experience as the number of acres of other communities?
I could absolutely do that, yeah. Are you, are you asking me if I know any?
Yes, yes.
No, no, so not off the top of my head, however, we do have, we do have a wide breadth of data that we took from all the research that we did. That shows you the split from all the towns. So that may, may very well be right in that, but that way you can see a little bit more of the detailed information.
When you say cle- when you say altered, is clearing land technically? So if somebody says here's open space and it's thick forest, it has to stay thick forest?
That's right.
So then how usable is it?
Right, so I, I, I agree, I think the ten percent number is high. Uh, my suggestion to the board would be, instead of going a percentage of the open space, why don't you designate a size? Just square footage, ten thousand square feet, twenty thousand square feet and make it a constant number. That's it, you know, what can, where can we park ten cars? How much do we need to park ten cars? And that's it, that way it's not a bouncing ball, like, uh, Mr. Caledonia said, ten percent of ten acres is an acre, that's a lot of land.
I think it, I guess it would also depend on what the open space is. Because if you're gonna put, I'm, I'm just, I go back to like an athletic field or something to that effect. Let's say it's a soccer field and there's eighteen kids on each team and none of them drive.
Yeah.
Ten spots is, you know, the ten parking spots is nowhere near enough.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point.
So it's dictated, I think that is dictated by the use.
Okay.
Because.
Are we leaning towards active recreation in Dyton for open space?
I'm just bringing it up as.
I know, I'm just wondering though, I mean, we need to make the decision as a town whether we wanna lean towards
Yeah.
just passive, just active, or combination of allowing, we have to be very careful.
I'm hearing from the board that they, they support active.
On open space pass, on, not, because.
That's what I'm hearing.
Combination, definitely a combination. I, I, I prefer passive, but when you say active, if you mean like sports fields and things like that, okay, yeah, okay.
I think that should be on per plan or per permit. The board should have the right to make that decision when it, when it's submitted to us. This way here, we can decide, we, and I, whatever, we can decide.
Somebody, somebody wants to build a development and like, oh, we got a lot of land, well, let's put a soccer field right in the middle of all the houses. Well, I don't wanna buy a house and then look at a soccer field.
Yeah, I, neither would I, no.
No, I mean, you know, put a restriction on there if you wanna get with recreational or designate the end for something, but I think it should be, uh, case by case.
A case, uh, yes, I, I, I agree. I don't think there should be, a, a square foot price, I think should be decided upon receiving that permit.
No, we got a nice long subdivision and the houses are back, we'll put a quarter mile race strip right alongside the road. That'd work out, right?
Yeah, drag racing.
Do you want some weight?
Oh, straight, just straight, just straight.
Drag racing at midnight.
Oh, I mean, carry bike, carry.
Sure.
I was just curious, based on the original discussions with the hunters, you know, when they talked about a golf course.
when they talked about a golf course, how does that figure, does that count as open space?
Uh-huh, it sure does.
It was active?
You know, as active as golf can be, of course.
Yeah, and usually the developer will come to us with some sort of idea of what they're looking for to, like that, so.
Yeah, well, I think on a case by case basis, is, is really the, the only way to, that it can be, because if somebody comes in with thirty acres, one comes in with ten acres, it just, it-
Right.
Said enough?
I'm happy to keep going as, as long as you are, so.
Do, there are a lot more.
We can always, yeah, we can jump through sections, I wanna be mindful of the time and your time and your spending here, so. Always move forward.
What is your timeline for, I mean, this was an example of us giving feedback, is there a timeline for when further feedback or input?
So it's, it's really at your, at your discretion, so if um, if you're looking to get to a potential um, town meeting, say, we can work off of that timeline, whether you tell us, you know, we'd like to potentially move something forward in, or tee something up in the next town meeting, or uh, or spring, or fall.
Well, this is, this is certainly not making the annual town meeting.
No, I don't, that is-
That's already closed.
Next year's town meeting, right?
Yeah, possibly the special, which might wind up being next year's annual town meeting.
Yeah.
So we would work backwards from that timeline that you would give us.
When does the warrant close for the special?
It's being reopened.
Oh, the special.
Oh, the specials?
Yeah, August, right?
Early August.
August. So if, if we can't make, we're, we're, yeah, we're not, we're already too late for the annual, which is in June. Uh, so the next opportunity would be to get something submitted for the special town meeting, which typically happens the first week of November.
Yes.
And so the warrant on that closes in August, so if we don't make that timeline, then that wraps us around the calendar until February, March of next year, which is when the warrants would be getting assembled for the annual that happens in January, in June, June. April tenth is when it closes here, so I would imagine March is, March timeframe of next year would be the next annual town meeting opportunity.
Okay.
To get onto that warrant for the June annual town meeting next year.
And is there, I, I guess a, a question on that? Would you feel there would need to be more of an extended, extended community outreach effort to inform the community on what this really is, what it means, gather more feedback? Cause that would also help in terms of this timeline?
No, I don't think so, no.
There has to be though, I think.
For this?
Yeah.
Really?
The, the bylaw would be amended, and then that would go through a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, definitely, but she's talking about, to this level.
I, I think this is the most audience you will ever see.
Yeah, there's always, um, cause Serpent can always staff. Yeah, we can always staff and have uh, community-wide meetings of some kind, unless you wanna continue to have a board meeting such as this, and welcome folks.
Did you have a specific question or input on this?
Well, yeah, if, if you don't mind.
We just, we just became aware of this.
Yeah, we have a big concern about um, multifamily uh, being, so you show the density of one lot to another, um, the conservation to the, to the regular one. And so, we go, this house is supposed to be represented as equal houses? Or the density, the conservation one is multifamily?
It's just density, it's just so if, if um, the regular conserv, if, if the regular subdivision has say seventy on it, the conservation will also have seventy, but it'll be a lot more consolidated and compressed.
Correct, for seventy, but if you go vertical.
Single family.
Single families.
Single family.
Single family, so that would be, that would be a part of this conversation, is, is that something that the town would ultimately be looking, looking to have more of that multifamily, that multi-story, et cetera? But there's no, we're not coming here with some kind of proposal of that kind, more of just gauging generally on this bylaw, but typically it is single-family homes that are.
Right, they'd be single families, so we wouldn't be looking at three-story townhouses or condos somewhere in town. Because I know around Boston, there's uh, a problem.
Boston has had a big problem with that now, because all the towns around Boston have rural area or urban areas.
They're passing, uh, passed the law two years ago, and they're gonna force these multifamily dwellings on these towns, because they, they need housing. And what they're doing is, they retaliate by not giving them funds, like they need to see more. Now you're not gonna get the funds, because you're not, there's probably two hundred condos, townhouses, multifamily.
Yeah, I believe that's part of the MBTA three A process, which is a different, I, I think Serpent may also be working with, with the planning board of the town on that, um, but this is a different, a completely different topic, so this is just-
Right, we, we didn't know about this, we started investigating that, we heard about that, and then she said yes.
We have a-
And we got nothing better to do till I make it to a meeting.
Again?
Thank you very much.
I love you guys.
We have a developer that's proposing two and three-story homes, very close by here, indictment. Okay.
But our bylaws protect the town from that.
Well, our bylaws protect it, but if they come in under the state forty B, then-
That's the affordable housing.
Right, but that's not, that's not because of any new law, that law's been affected.
Right, right, now, this is not part of the state.
No, not at all.
I-
Serpent, do you have any understanding?
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I understand you're the representative on Serpent's for the planning board?
Yes, sir.
And it's also my understanding that there are some legislators and the governor who would love to include Dyton in the MBTA impact zone.
I don't know if you're aware of this, we are in the impact zone.
We are.
We are, we are, we are a designated community.
So with that being said, do those rules supersede any bylaws that the town of Dyton creates?
Yeah, forty B just drives over everything, absolutely, yeah.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a couple of years ago, I, I went to a Serpent Commissioners' meeting, and the light bulb turned on, and I went, oh, wait, we're not exempted. Oh, okay, and I listed all the reasons why we need to get ahead of this. And, yeah, I mean, Jim's well aware of this, yeah, we, we are, we are not free and clear, we, we are also affected. And so if we don't, it's, and why it's, and, I'm sorry, this has nothing to do with this conversation, but um, if we don't get ahead of it, if we don't make a plan for it and prepare for it, and, and make the allocations, what we need to do to, to plan it properly, it's just, this is just like the cannabis rules. If you don't get ahead of the cannabis, cannabis rules are coming anyway. So you don't get ahead of the forty B rules, and then the MBTA community rules, it's going to be impressed upon us anyway, and then we will find ourselves in a situation where we, we will no longer be eligible for grants, all kinds of other things are gonna start to happen to us negatively if we don't get our percentages up for affordable housing, as, as required by the MBTA communities.
Was open space invited to this meeting?
To this meeting?
Yes.
I, I'm not certain.
Yes, they were.
They were.
You're, you're on open space?
No, I'm not.
No, okay, okay, I thought you were.
You, you were, weren't you?
I was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe Kerry, yeah, I don't believe Kerry heard back, but we did meet two times with the open space.
Okay, okay, yes ma'am.
Just one more thing, um, the gentleman to your right, I kind of am in his court, because if, if you let the HOA take over the open space, what's the point? The Dyton residents don't have the open space, you've created open space for a housing area where the kids are just gonna go and hang in that open space. Why don't you leave it as it is, and let them have their own housing lots? And instead of these open spaces, especially if we're letting HOA take it over.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That means we're putting restrictions on what developers can do, which could trigger them going into a forty B, and then we have no control over it at all.
None of the control.
And then, and then instead of having seventy houses, now it's three hundred and fifty houses.
That's right, that's right, so it's, it's, there's, you have to be very, there's a very fine line that, that-
It's a tipping point.
So if we all go back to wells, cesspools, and uh, and, and having squirrels and electric, running electricity, we-
Squirrels have rights too, you know?
We, we hear you loud and clear, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I got one more thing, so.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that we do have a conservation subdivision that's in the works right now, Forest Hills, and we have like two hundred progressives that are up in arms over it, and willing to fight for it forever, so, you know, we uh, probably gonna have another one try, but they're just not gonna be accepted well in town, and the young ladies need to understand that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, so, I hope this is fruitful.
This, yes, this has been very fruitful.
Um, is there anything you wanna hit on again this evening before we move on? Anything we missed? I know we, we jumped around a little bit here, but-
Yeah, overall, or like out of the whole thing, or?
Oh, yeah, where would you like to?
Keep going.
Yeah, I mean, what else would you like to hit here that we haven't hit here tonight?
Oh, um, I think the recorded restrictions, that might be a, a quick one, so have there been any conservation restrictions that have been secured for open space that doesn't go to town? So considering adding protection measure, uh, measures for land that, that does not go to the Conservation Commission.
You're saying like the Wildlands Trust, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, as much as they wanna work in town, I think they're looking for land that's contiguous and with other open space, so um, we're, I think we're open to that and, and working with that if they have interest. But you don't know of any in town, right?
Any what in town?
Conservation restrictions.
Restricted and helped by land trusts, like there's no local land trust, but.
I don't, I-
But Mr. Higgins, do you know of some land in town that the Wildlands Trust?
I don't, it's a very small part, I'm just, all of one thirty-eight or something, somebody donated it and now donated it to them in their will, but.
Yeah, is it Mr. Kingsley's property, huh?
It, it might be.
Yeah, I think so too, um, but that's about it.
Well, I think there's somewhere around, I don't know how many thousands of acres that are owned by Dyton Industries.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not in a trust, I don't believe.
No.
It's DI trust.
Yeah, it's DI trust, but there's not any land trust.
Not a land trust. A land trust is, that specifically preserves land for future generations.
For conservation.
Okay.
That's not DI trust.
There is, is the wood farm?
They reserve, yeah, they'll make a DI trust generation.
See, but it's still-
See, there is.
We're getting nowhere here.
You see, uh, is the wood farm in a, a trust?
Yes.
On one thirty-eight?
Well, that, that's, that's another thing.
It's owned by Crystal Avenue.
Yeah, like some of this conservation land, open space, I would love to see it like used for, you know, for uh, what am I trying to say, forestry plans and things like that, I think that would make a lot of sense for the town. But um, someone has to wanna invest in that, and HOAs may have to wanna do it.
The wood farm is, is far, they, they may need livestock, so. Okay, all right, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's okay, it's a good conversation.
Last thought, is this the, like, time and place? Is this the place where we would be able to say, you know, said land or said open space? Shouldn't, I heard someone say, the town is stuck now with X acres that is landlocked by two properties that were donated? Is this the place to say, that can't happen?
Well, it's the restrictions, right?
Yeah, cause that's probably an important thing.
Well, the Conservation Commission accepted a landlocked piece of land.
It really isn't, it, it connects the DR property, which is town of Dyton.
But it, yeah. Yeah, true.
Okay, okay.
And we got two parcels there that connect to each other.
So there's a way out.
Or a helicopter.
Right, no, I mean, it's not lost land, right, which nobody wants to get into, but I don't-
The lot is wet, but it was gifted to us.
Right, but, right. It can be added on to town property for, to increase the lot size, whatever, but it's not lost, you know what I mean?
It probably is.
It was generous, don't you think?
It was?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
So, I think um, on a lighter note, this is the last slide, so.
Rough crowd.
I know this was a lot, so I appreciate all of your time and feedback, really.
It's a lot of work, I mean, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, um, so just-
There, there is one more question at the back of the room.
Can I just mention one more thing, where you talked about that MTA or what?
MBTA.
MBTA, um, there are towns in Boston that are fighting this, and it's going in front of the Supreme Judicial Court.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't judge this, you know, any decision on what you do here before you know what that you said.
Yeah, but they're fighting for Boston, not for Dyton.
The towns of the state is, they're fighting the state.
They, they would, she's saying they would set a precedence, and then we can follow the precedence.
Right.
Yeah, we would still have to fight it.
But if we, if there was precedence in our favor, then we'd have something to, something to, you know, to follow.
So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thank you.
For, sorry, what's the report?
Yeah, not really happened yet, have you?
The bylaws changing.
It would, it would take a while, yeah, yeah, all of these take, take quite some time, there's always some kind of town process, so.
Even if, even if we were ready to go for the special town meeting, that means we would have to have a public hearing prior, uh, and then it would go on a warrant, it would be submitted to the, on, on the warrant in the August timeframe to be in the special town meeting, so it's, seems like we got a lot of time, we don't have a lot of time. So it, it, this is, this is likely gonna go on next year's annual town meeting.
Well, thank you for your time.
I think, I think that means he's leaving.
We can always touch base on, the last few questions are really more of, are there any other concerns, priorities? What types of recreational uses should be considered, going back to the active versus passive?
Yeah.
What's the capacity for additional recreational amenities associated with maintenance? And then is there anyone else, like any other board, commission, committee, um, perhaps a department in town that we should get in touch with, have more conversations? I know we asked this at the last meeting, but it always helps for more faces and-
I don't remember yet, hoping to be on May eighth, open space, definite.
Open space needs to be, uh, it's to get in on this.
Many open spaces.
Okay, wonderful, so that's, yeah, that's everything, unless you have any?
No.
Any questions, comments?
No, I'm, no, I don't have any questions, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna, we're gonna get out of your way, so you can have your meeting.
We're all done.
So.
He thinks we're done.
So, so, uh, 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 okay, so, uh, the Dyton Conservation Commission uh, looks for adjournment from its meeting, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, good night, thank you guys.
Thank you, Conservation Commission.
I did.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, we're, we're just-
Kerry will be seeing you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
This is the longest we've ever stayed at a meeting.
Yes, I agree.
And I am to blame for that.
And I just wanted to know, the meeting's still going on, we have not adjourned.
Oh boy, oh boy.
As you know, Joe, we're still on camera, and we're still blasting across the internet. All right, so um, next item on the agenda is to discuss coordination between-
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Town permitting, author, authorities, and project inspection, so, hey. So I was, I, I asked Kerry to put this on the agenda, cause I wanted us to have some- So I was, uh, I, I asked Kerry to put this on the agenda because I wanted us to have some time to discuss this in detail. I think, uh, I think we're all saturated at this point, but I, I would like to at least present what I put in front of you here. So, um, who drafted this? This is a March fifth one. Who's this?
That was Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson, uh, put together a couple, you have a two, two-sided document there. It's really two separate documents. The first one is the role of the Stormwater Committee, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board in Stormwater-related permitting. That's one thing. The second side is construction site and post-construction stormwater inspections. So, um, what we're trying to do, what Mike would like all of us to do, he's asking all the different boards to go through these two documents and consolidate our feedback. Um, I don't want to go through this right now. I'm, I'm tired. I'm sure you guys are tired of being here. But, um, but what we're really trying to do is trying to streamline, we mentioned this during the, during the meeting here, trying to streamline the permitting process, permitting process, the application process for residents and businesses who come to the town on, especially when things have, well, everything has stormwater implication. You can't get around that. But whether or not it has conservation implications and whatnot, so we're trying to make it so somebody coming to the town with an application isn't zigzagging around a bunch of different departments. So it's, it's more streamlined, more parallel processes. Things are happening at the same time, and we're, we're saving time, not only for the applicant, but also for the town, and not going around in circles. So that's the first side. That's the role of the Stormwater Committee, yada, yada. The second side is what happens after, right? All right, so this thing, this thing's permitted, it's off, it's, it's in the wild. During the construction and during post-construction, how do we make sure things are being inspected and maintained and, and, and operating for years to come? Now, immediately I went to HOA because we have a big problem in the town of Dayton with HOAs, number one, being set up properly, number two, actually being executed, and number three, continuing perpetuity as the residents live in these developments, because, you know, we, we had a development come in tonight, no HOA. I live in, I live in a development, no HOA. Development behind me, no real HOA. Well, they do, they do finally have a HOA, but it, it's, it's a reoccurring theme. And the, the biggest, the, the biggest driver for an HOA, aside from all the other things we put on it, is stormwater management, because that's a big thing. The town doesn't want to take on the responsibility of managing a sub-development's stormwater system. They want the development to set up, to, to have that thing, to have the system installed, to have it work properly. Uh, any, any conservation implications also being managed, and at the same time to have the development set up a body that would inspect and, and maintain that system for years to come so that we don't have stormwater issues or conservation issues in the future. So, all that being said, that's the second side. So, um, I sent you, so in your packet, and also what I emailed you guys in Microsoft Word format, was I bled all over this thing. You know, I, I, I added a bunch of comments and, and things on the side there, so please take, please do a fresh read on the March fifth one. I sent you that one. And like, you know, redline it, whatever, and, and then look at what I did, and then if you can please either send it to me or to Kerry, if you can do it electronically, that's even better, so we can consolidate everybody's inputs. Unless you guys want to have, have read it and know what I'm talking about, want to talk about it tonight, I think that's probably all we want to hit tonight, unless Jim or anybody else here wants to.
Five of nine.
It's five of nine, I'm fine.
I appreciate your time, I, I really do.
Okay, so take a look at that, and Lisa, you, so I, I took my, I took my red lines and I went Lisa, Jim, Kerry. I left Mike off of it for now because I want to, I want to consolidate our stuff, and Mike said, I did put Mike on it, but Mike said, hey, please just talk to the rest of the planning board, consolidate, and then send me a planning board document. That's all we're going to do.
Okay.
So between now and May first, which is our next meeting, uh, if you guys can please send me your inputs and we can have a, probably a boil-up at that point, just to get everybody together, is that?
So this will be on the agenda.
This will be on the agenda.
Maris is going to be on the agenda, so I'm coming again.
Okay, thanks.
And then we can figure it all out.
Okay.
Just for the record, Maris Lane is supposed to have a, um, HOA.
Right, but they're not done yet.
They should have already submitted.
Yeah, he hasn't met the target deadlines, and that's why it has to be presented at town meeting.
But these people weren't even aware that they have an HOA.
Well, it's in their closing documents.
It is?
Of course it is.
And you are positive of that?
Positive, because it was always set up to have an HOA, so. The problem is, I don't defend everyone, but we're closing, there's a lot of stuff there, you're not reading it all, but it's in there.
Hey, that's a big one, not to, not to actually be physically aware of.
Joe, it happens all the time with conservation stuff.
I understand, and that's one of the, that's why I brought that up a couple of times.
And even with conservation stuff, oh, I had no idea I had wetlands. Oh, you, you have a, um, permit, existing permit on your property.
Well, if, if, I, I get it because I did my closing the same way a lot of people do their closing, without legal counsel.
Well, you waived the title search, which I think is crazy.
So like, well, I don't think we did that, but, um, but I, I, I know, I, I do the same thing a lot, I did a lot of, the same thing a lot of people do. They, I don't need a lawyer, I could just read three hundred pages and sign my name a hundred and fifty times, uh, but yeah, I, I can see that happening.
Oh, yeah. I could see it happening too. So can, um, I just want to ask a quick question. There was the other paper that you sent out, the memorandum, the round agreement. I, when are you looking for feedback on that?
So.
Was that just, uh?
Well, that, that's, that's, that's these two documents.
By May first? Is that what you said? Because I.
Sure.
My commissioners don't even have this yet.
Okay.
And so we have a meeting tomorrow night. I do have draft, um, Weston and Sampson policy on there, but.
Yeah, I, I think what Mike wants is everybody to look at the March fif, fifth version. The one I sent out was April fifteenth version.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you, you probably want to go back to the March fifth version and comment on that one, just so Mike's getting everybody's fresh inputs.
That's the one you got at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one that.
We disseminated it to the.
It was emailed.
It was emailed, yeah, so.
But I was home sick, you know.
Yeah, so if you go back to that email that Mike sent out and said, this is the document we're going to be talking to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I probably shouldn't have sent out the April fifteenth version because now people have two versions. Let's wonder where I look at. Look at the March fifth version. So we can all start, and then Mike's going to have to consolidate everybody's inputs and then just right-click and delete them all. Kidding about the last part, okay. Somebody's going to have to, uh, WordSmith the Microsoft Word files, but, okay, all right, so I think we've had enough for one night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you being here, Jim, thank you.
Oh, no problem, thank you. Okay, let's do it again in two weeks, right?
Yes, sir. All right, next.
Joseph, be good, okay?
Joseph? I'm going to start calling you Joseph from now on.
Josephie.
Daniel? People are.
Hey, I've been called all kinds of things, so anything that's male, I'll be fine.
Yeah, we are, we are definitely still live. All right, okay, so, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes.
If you start calling me Lisa, then I'll have a problem.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Can I please have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Nate and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I do not believe we have any correspondence. Any additional public input? Nothing heard. Somebody please make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, Tom.